Good evening. We will call this meeting on March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five to order. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mayor Grunder.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Bloodsworth.
Here.
Commissioner Howe.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
I invite you all to please stand with me. We're gonna have Commissioner Bloodsworth give the invocation tonight, followed by the pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Lord God, we thank you for this day, Lord. We thank you for this town of High Springs, Father. I just ask that you guide us, Lord, to do the business of our citizens here, Father. Lord, we just ask that we're able to do what we need to do, Father. I also ask, Lord, that you be with our first responders all over our United States. Our military that are serving, Father, just bless them and keep them safe, Father. For it's in Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will entertain an approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the agenda as presented.
I second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Approval of consent agenda minutes of the February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five commission meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the minutes of the February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five commission meeting with one correction, please. On page six of six, with the vote that discussed fire services for Pioneer Days. It says here the motion carried five to zero, but Vice Mayor Miller recused himself from that vote. Correct? So it should be four to zero with a note that he recused himself.
We good on that, Ms. Stone? Perfect.
It was a long motion, sorry.
It was.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We have no special presentations this evening, so we'll move on to unfinished business item one. Discuss, consider, and act on ordinance two thousand and twenty-five dash oh-two.
With you. I had the CRA still up on my screen, so I'll be right there with it. There it is. Yep. Mr. Mayor, this is an ordinance number two thousand and twenty-five dash zero-two, an ordinance of the City of High Springs, Florida, calling for a referendum question to be placed before the qualified electors of the City of High Springs at the next general election, which is scheduled for Tuesday, November fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. Providing charter referendum questions determining whether to adopt the proposed amendments to these charter for the City of High Springs. Providing for the full text of the proposed amended charter for the City of High Springs. Providing for the requisite ballot language. Providing for the repeal of all conflicting ordinances. Providing for severability and providing an effective date. The appropriate motion is to pass ordinance number two thousand and twenty-five dash zero-two upon its reading by title only.
Okay. Do we have any commissioner comments on the... I know we've been over this. Our second reading of it, correct? Yes. The two thousand and twenty-four Charter Review Board. Any public comment on it? Okay. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number two thousand and twenty-five zero point dash oh-two.
Second.
Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Grunder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Bloodsworth.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller. I'm sorry. Commissioner Howe.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, with regard to this one issue, if I could also ask, last time when we discussed them, we also set a date future for when we would take up the other recommendations by the Charter Review Board. And, you know, they put a lot of work into this, and I would like to entertain the thought of also doing that for what remains. I would like to see us discuss this like we did this year, maybe the second meeting in January. There are five more items that we haven't discussed. And I'm in favor of pushing one of them forward and leaving the other four alone. So I don't know how we do that, how we make that kind of a motion. Maybe we don't right now.
Just make a mo... Just make a motion that we bring up the other ones at, you said, the second meeting in January or whatever it is.
Of next year.
Just make a motion and we can bring it back up.
I'd like to make a motion that we bring up the recommendation of providing plurality voting systems versus majority to the commission next January, the second meeting in January of two thousand and twenty-sixth. And that leaves four recommendations by the Charter Review Board that would not be considered. Certainly, you guys may differ on that, but the other four that remain, I don't see that there's substantial gain to be had by entertaining the other four.
I'd like to see us talk about all of them, just go back over them in the second meeting and just so we get another set of eyes on them. Maybe something changes this year, maybe something doesn't. I don't know, but I'd like to see us at least go over all of them. Just that way they know we've done our due diligence, and I think we already have.
We have, yeah.
But I would like to see us go over the other... I'd like to see us go over all of them.
So do y'all wanna go over that January, or you wanna do it before that?
There's two motions on the floor.
One, I can't make a motion on.
Right, there's one motion.
That's why I'm asking before we second or whatever, is do you wanna discuss it in January? Do you wanna discuss it before that and then have the deciding factor on that in January? How do y'all wanna work it?
Well, if we do it in January, that gives us enough time, Angela, right, to get it on the ballot. I mean, there's not a second to my motion, so the motion dies for lack of a second. That's fine. That's my motion, though.
Well, I'll second it. We'll discuss it over that January meeting then.
Well, I wanted to just discuss the one, though.
Oh, the one, okay.
There are four that remain, and Mr. Mayor...
You're making a motion to do just one.
Right, and Mr. Mayor prefers that we consider all five, which I understand that entirely. I just think there's one that merits continual discussion. But so if you would prefer to discuss all five, then you could make a different motion.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we discuss all five of them over again before we make the final decision to put them, send them as it is. That way we cover all our bases at one given time.
I second.
All right. It's been properly moved and seconded. Do we have any citizen comment? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Moving right along. We're gonna move on to unfinished business item two. Discuss, consider, and act on resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash B.
Mr. Mayor, this is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of High Springs, setting user fees for the High Springs Elementary School and Community Center Old School, High Springs Civic Center, Douglas Community Center, Sports Complex Fields, and Memorial Park Fields, and adopting an application form, setting rules and regulations for use, including a hold harmless agreement, and adopting a waiver of fees application form. Providing for conflicts, providing an effective date. The appropriate motion is passed. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five B as read by title only.
So this was brought up at the last meeting, or two meetings ago, for reviewing the rates of the facilities that we rent. You asked that we brought you back some expenses so you could weigh out what it's costing to run these facilities, and Diane kinda got that, and we can discuss it and see what you wanna do, how you wanna proceed on these rental rates.
Specific questions that you wanna address first? Or the information that Ms. Malden provided last time was information I had given her. There are some categories that have to be allocated across, like the old school. You've got insurance for the entire building or utilities for the entire building. So I allocated to those rooms based on that. The Douglas Center only had a couple of months of actual data when we started. So we took that and did the math as if that same amount of rental and same amount of expenses occur for an entire year, just to give you apples to apples, so we weren't just looking at two months of data. And we anticipate that the rental would be similar to the Civic Center. What those numbers don't include is things like the air conditioning replacement or the roof replacement at the Civic Center. So we spent about nineteen thousand dollars, more than that, in twenty-three to replace the air conditioning and the roof. So the expenses that you were shown are really just operating expenses. And again, they really don't encompass everything that's included. For an example, I used twenty dollars for the cost of staff to do all of the booking and refunding and answering questions on the phone and things like that regarding the rentals. And they easily spend more than an hour on the phone or working on that when you have to cut a check for a refund in addition to explaining the rules. So those numbers are pretty conservative. Really, the bottom line is we are not even breaking even with the facilities, with the rentals that we've had in the last two years. If there's a specific concern you have, by all means, I'll be happy to answer that. But that's why we brought forward what we did. And even with the increases, of course, we don't know how rentals are gonna go. Things could change. We could have air conditioning break at one of the facilities, again, like we did with the Civic Center. So as we do any rates going forward, we have to use the information we have and make a good professional opinion on it. So these will get us almost breaking even, but we're still not a hundred percent there.
All right, so my first question would be, a few months ago, when we first adopted the amount for the Douglas Center, why was it not brought up that we were not going to be able to meet financially the bills of the Douglas Center?
Mr. Mayor, at that time, we did not have an analysis complete. The Douglas Center had just been built, and we needed to be able to start renting right away. So we just deferred to the Civic Center rate since that was closest rental to that. Once we started looking into all these numbers further and looking at all of the different rental properties, we brought forward these new rates. It was really a matter of just the timing of it. We needed to be able to provide rental right away. We didn't wanna come in and make a number, you know, off the cuff for Douglas Center without having any data yet. And again, we only had a couple of months before we did this, but it's been one of the things on our list of things to bring to you for quite a while. So it was really just a matter of timing.
I guess we did have a little data, 'cause we knew that at the Civic Center, we still were losing money. So that's why I was just, I don't understand how we don't have no data to base it off of when we already knew we were losing money in the Civic Center.
At that time, I'm sorry.
Then we go and go lower with a whole brand-new building that we already know that we're losing money in another area. So you did have data in the beginning.
When we talked about the Civic Center and knowing we were losing money, again, we had just spent twenty thousand dollars on the building. So we knew for a fact that that was not even gonna make up that difference. The Douglas Center, we knew, should probably be more than that, but we knew we were gonna do this project and come back to you with the other numbers. So we didn't want to come in and give too high of a number, and it wasn't appropriate.
Mr. Mayor. So for the Douglas Center, we based it off of the square footage and the capacity to make it similar with the Civic Center, 'cause we just had remodeled it, and we took and we decided a price, you know, a few months ago on it. As we look at this, we're reviewing all the rental fees. So since we just set the Douglas Center, we don't have to change every one of these. We can leave the Douglas Center alone till we get a year, two years' worth of data. We're just making the best-case estimates of what we could do, and we set the price, 'cause, one, we didn't wanna set it too high because we just spent all the money and all that work remodeling the Douglas Center. We want it utilized. And we looked at capacity and square footage and came up with the best guesstimate what it is. As you look at this, I understand the Douglas Center you're sensitive on. We don't have to change that.
It has nothing to do with the Douglas Center. It just has to do with... Data could have been made before we did it. And then, okay, Santa Fe Room, since we're saying that I'm sensitive about Douglas Center, let's go to the Santa Fe Room. Santa Fe Room capacity is seventy-four, which is bigger than the Douglas Community Center. Why is the rates for the Santa Fe Room cheaper than the Douglas Community Center when it's a bigger building?
Because it's a bigger building, but it is in disrepair, and nobody's... We wanted the Douglas Center utilized, so it's a different rate. Comparing the Douglas Center, which was recently remodeled, standalone, and whatnot, looking at the Santa Fe Room, it's like comparing apples to oranges there.
But not when you say that you're gonna repair all the stuff in the Santa Fe Room. That's what you said last.
But you haven't approved any of that yet, and that's what we're looking at.
So I'm just saying, even if you're gonna raise the rate at all, you're gonna have to repair in order to raise the rates. So are you just gonna raise the rates and nobody's gonna rent it? 'Cause they're not renting it now at the rates I just set.
No, but when we set the rate for the Douglas Center and you're comparing it to the Santa Fe Room, they're completely different buildings, capacity, and style. So with the Santa Fe Room, it's not being rented, 'cause it's in disrepair. If we want to raise the rate, as I said in the previous meeting, is if you're gonna raise the rate and we're gonna push the rent that, we have to remodel that. New carpet, new paint, and...
Right, so that's what I'm saying. It's not comparing apples to oranges. If the ideal is to repair the room, the room is now in perfect condition. And it's the newest renovated room if you're going to renovate it. So the fact that the Santa Fe Room is bigger than the Douglas Community Center, it should be more money because it's bigger. And the only reason why the square footage is bigger of the Douglas Community Center is because it's not adding on the bathrooms that's in the Santa Fe Room, because there are shared bathrooms in the whole facility. So really, usable space, Santa Fe Room has more usable space than the Douglas Community Center.
Wouldn't we also need to consider that there's a kitchen, full kitchen at Douglas Center?
And it's also a stage in the Santa Fe Room that the Douglas Center does not have. So it's comparing apples and apples.
So just so I have my numbers right, right now, even with the raise, we're still not gonna come out even on these buildings. As a city, we're gonna lose money. So, right?
Right, and it's an estimate.
Correct, correct. I don't under... I guess I don't understand, Vice Mayor, what you're trying to say when it comes... What are you trying to say and what would you like done, I guess is what.
Oh, no, I'm just asking why we're not going up on the Santa Fe Room to the same prices of Douglas Community Center when it's more capacity? And then you're going to remodel it, so you're gonna spend more money on it.
I think the amenities at the Douglas Center are better than the Santa Fe Room.
It's really not, so let's get to that, 'cause I actually just rented out the Douglas Community Center. It has a big pothole as soon as you turn into it. It has no lighting out there. So my event was at seven o'clock, and everybody was tearing up their cars out there, 'cause they could not see the hole. That's the bigger hole as soon as you turn in there, 'cause there's no lighters. Matter of fact, when you walk out the back door of the Douglas Center, when it rains, it pours down. And that's gonna be a problem in the future, and it's gonna be a messed-up roof in about three months because it was built incorrectly.
I thought we had talked about that, and that was gonna get taken care of, because on grand opening, we all saw that.
Yeah, we did. I know exactly what you're talking about.
It still doesn't.
I think the... I think what we gotta get down to is that we just dropped three hundred thousand into the Douglas Center, and all of these rates have to come up, and I appreciate the work that the city staff has done in doing that. And I think that even if we're coming out, I'm not happy with the fact that we're gonna come out lower. I mean, we don't have the resources right now as a city to take losses, unfortunately, at this time. And I think what we... Do we have any idea about what the loss would be? I know last year we averaged like ten thousand dollars in a loss. And I know it's a very...
No, and I really don't know. I would recommend that we revisit it in six months, you know, and keep an eye on it. This is something, you have the opportunity to change these at any time. So if we find, and we don't wanna keep coming back to you for it, but should we find there's a huge discrepancy or one of our estimates was wrong, that we were off on how much it would be rented or something like that, we can certainly bring that back to you. And again, it's totally up to you how we proceed with it.
Mr. Mayor, if I might ask a question. To Vice Mayor Miller's point, we've got a capacity disparity, you know, the capacity with the Douglas Center, and I know that Chief Peters explained to us why the Douglas Community Center's capacity was so low, even though the square footage of the Douglas Center is almost the exact same as the Civic Center. Do we understand, but I think what Vice Mayor Miller was saying in terms of operational data, do we know what it costs to operate the Civic Center per month, insurance, air conditioning, those kinds of operational costs? How do those operational costs compare with what data we have for the Douglas Community Center so far and the Santa Fe Room? Maybe the Santa Fe Room is more expensive to air condition 'cause it's older. I don't know. But I think if we attack this from the perspective of coming up with a standard rate per square foot of the piece of what's being rented, it may be a little bit more standard approach instead of... Now, with Santa Fe Room and Post Springs Room, the Post Springs Room, we can't even rent that out, right? So I'm not sure why that's even on here. It's taken. It's not even available to the city, right? We can't rent it out.
If you wanted to change that, the information's there for you.
Well, we can't, so... But with the Santa Fe Room, to Mr. Marshall's point, it's in disrepair. It needs a lot of work. But what are the operational costs for the square footage of these facilities, and how do they compare? Now, certainly, a Douglas Center inside is much nicer, but what Vice Mayor Miller said about no lighting, that was a big deal on the night of the election. It got really dark there really fast. So, you know, I think those external amenities certainly would play into it as well, 'cause we do have better lighting at the Civic Center. I don't know. I would like to, if we can, since you've got that kind of data, the operational costs, what are the operational costs of the actual facilities?
Right, and that's what we provided last time, but I can bring it back to you in a different format if that's easier to compare.
I guess I just didn't distill down to that. I didn't really understand what the operational cost... I understand we're losing money. I get that part. But, you know, what's the insurance that we pay? What's the monthly HVAC?
And those are all included in those numbers. So we have... One of the challenges, of course, we have to do allocations. The old school, it's one building, multiple rooms. So we have the insurance for the whole building. We estimate based on square feet and get a ballpark figure.
Right.
The utilities, same thing. We have the utilities for each location. That's an easy one, especially for Civic Center, Douglas Center. Those are independent meters, so that's easy to do. And we obviously have the water data here. Do you wanna... Okay. So the numbers that we have, obviously, those things that we have the actuals for, we're using those. And then where we have, like, staff time to allocate, those are numbers that we are making assumptions on when we allocate it. Again, we've erred on the side of being lower, and we haven't included the capital costs and capital improvements that have been made or maybe should have been made. Like the Santa Fe Room, for example. Right now, we're not renting it because it's a mess. And if we do make...
One second. That was my question earlier. Is the intent to remodel the Santa Fe Room? That's just a yes or no question.
We haven't said yes or no yet.
I know, but what I'm saying is, if the intent is to do, like, are you gonna present that to us? That we gonna vote on that in the future? 'Cause that intent doesn't mean that it's gonna happen. Is that gonna be presented to us to vote on?
If we ask them to. I'm assuming we don't have the money for it right now, so...
So that's what I'm saying. So the purpose of going up on this building that's not getting rented at the rate now, what are we going to do to ensure that it gets rented? So the intent is going to be to remodel it. And so what I'm saying is, after it's remodeled, it should be more than the Douglas Center because it has a bigger capacity than Douglas Center. That's simple math.
But I don't think it's more than that, because honestly, if you look at it, if it offers different amenities, people may want it for those amenities, not for the stage. Not everybody wants a stage. People might want the kitchen, though. So I think you take the data that you...
The kitchen doesn't have an oven.
But I think you take the data that you do have and that we get over the next couple of months, maybe, to show that, you know, this is being rented out, and maybe we can ask people, you know, what drew you to this? Was it location? Was it the amenities you did have? Was it the, you know, whatever it was? That way we can get some more of that information and really have an idea. But that Douglas Center right now, I mean, it is, it's completely different because Santa Fe Room is trash and the Douglas Center is gorgeous. So people are definitely gonna rent that one more.
Right, so I'm not having a problem with raising the rent. What I'm saying is that you wanna be fair across the board. Just because the Douglas Center has an amenity that the Santa Fe Room doesn't have... Just because the Douglas Center has an amenity that the Santa Fe Room doesn't have, the Santa Fe Room has an amenity that the Douglas Center doesn't have. It has better parking. It has better lighting. It has a stage, so maybe nobody doesn't want to stay, but some people do want a stage. Because I did a play at the Santa Fe Room and I can't do a play at the Douglas Center because there's a stage there.
Absolutely. How many plays did we have in the Santa Fe Room? Versus how many, I mean, I, I completely hear what you're saying. I just think that, you know, with some more information, I think we'll see that the Douglas Center is a more, that's the reason the price is going to be higher because it's more desired.
It's more desired because it's new, it's, but you're about to, if we, if the intent is to remodel the Santa Fe Room, then it's going to be more desirable after remodel.
I think the main purpose of, of the intent, in my opinion, would be the Civic Center and the Douglas Center, how, how much can we raise those rates to break even for everything? Like I, what it costs and breaking it down, it's still going to be the same cost. If we're losing ten thousand dollars a year, let's come up with a number. And I, and it doesn't matter if you want to put it in the, we have to find a way to get people in here to rent these enough times to break even or make money. So I'm, what, what we're discussing for the last thirty minutes, I still don't, I, I guess I just, do you just want to put everything at three hundred and fifty dollars? Do we just want to put everything at two, I, I don't, we're talking in circles and we're not getting anywhere.
I'm really not talking in circles. I'm actually pretty direct. You just don't want to hear it. I'm telling you that the Santa Fe Room should be the same price as the Douglas Center because they got the same amenities.
Wonderful. Can we, I make a motion that we raise the Santa Fe Room a hundred dollars to two fifty. Do you want to raise all of them? Because that's, these are new rates, right? Do you want to raise all the new rates and then plus one hundred for the Santa Fe Room? Yes, that way the Douglas Center and the Santa Fe Room are the same cost. That's what we're.
Any idea what the daddy is for is how many times the Santa Fe Room was rented last year, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two? I meant, how long was it before the facility was destroyed, not taken care of, whatever? I meant, did, did the rentals drop down as it got destroyed more? Or was it rented for similar same amount of time during these three years?
Yes, the rentals have dropped, had dropped off. We just haven't been renting it recently because it's not rentable in our opinion. It's mostly from just disrepair from not keeping up with it. It's, it's general maintenance, things like replacing carpet when it needs to be done or replacing tables or doing the painting. It's not one incident, it's just time has, it's worn out and, and we're at that point. And the other thing we can do, should you decide that we should go in and remodel and update it, we can come back and we can change the price for Santa Fe. I mean, we have that flexibility if that makes it more palatable, so.
No, I said that that statement is not accurate. The Santa Fe Room got messed up when the art camp came in. So that statement is untrue because I was renting the Santa Fe Room before the art camp and it was always nice.
I'm sorry, I do have a question with the motion. So we're going to approve the resolution raising the rate for full day price to two fifty. What about the half day price? Are we going to raise it up to the same as the Douglas Center as well as one fifty?
Yes, please.
Okay, and what about the deposit?
A hundred and fifty.
Okay.
Okay, you have a motion on the floor.
Angela, will you do me a favor and reread the motion so everybody's on the same page, please?
Would be that we're passing resolution twenty twenty-five dash B, having the Santa Fe Room deposit at one fifty as presented, but changing the Santa Fe Room deposit for one fifty, half day price to one fifty, the full day price to two fifty and all others as presented.
And do we know if we're going to, if we have any leverage for the art camp to replace the tables or replace any of the stuff they were supposed to replace?
I doubt it. I think they shut it down.
No, so we're, okay. Well, I would be certainly willing to have a workday out there. If we want to get people together to volunteer to paint or do whatever we can, I'd be happy to pitch in. It's a beautiful.
We have any citizen comment?
Linda Jones. The Santa Fe Room is not a result of normal wear and tear. The carpet was new, it was in good condition. I attended many meetings over there and no problems whatsoever, whether the stage was there or not, there was no problem. If you wanted to use the stage, fine. If you didn't, fine too. It was done as a result of the art camp. And it was wrecked. The tables were wrecked, the carpeting was wrecked because paint is splattered everywhere. So it wasn't normal maintenance that, that had the problem with the downgrade of that room. And nothing's ever been done about it. No one was ever held accountable for it. And we tried over and over and over from the very outset of that to get that taken care of, but nothing was ever done. So I don't know what condition it is and I hadn't been over there in a long time, but I don't know if you'll be able to rent that room for two hundred and fifty dollars. I, I haven't even been in the Douglas Center. I don't know what the differences are. But I do know that that room, the last time I was in it, was a mess. And that's the reason why. Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, you don't have to wait till it's citizen comment.
Personally, I think two fifty is a little bit high for the Santa Fe Room. The Douglas Center has a twelve tray warming oven, also has a refrigerator with an ice maker. It houses, I believe, capacity is ninety. It's got eighty chairs, eight round tables and eight, eight foot table there. The parking, you can actually park on the side there in front of the fence. We are, there are plans on finishing out that parking lot. Currently, there are two handicap parking lots, spaces there. Sorry, I'm out of breath. I just ran from soccer scrimmages. So, and then as far as the Santa Fe Room, we do actually have plans to replace the carpet in there. I would like y'all, I hear you saying that yes, they did destroy that room, but I would also say that it was up to staff to monitor how that was used. So I would like y'all not to place the full blame on the Good News Arts Camp. They did a wonderful job and they did provide a great service to our children. So, but I do feel like two fifty is extremely high for that particular building.
Douglas Community Center has a capacity of sixty-six, not ninety.
Sorry, thank you for correcting.
Mr. Mayor, I completely understand both views here. Listening to her, I'm also in agreement not to raise it because if it is destroyed for whatever reason, you raise it, you're definitely not going to get it. I wouldn't pay for it. At least it's manageable if somebody wanted to go in there and pay these fees right now and use it as it is right now. I don't see a chance of raising that. I just don't like it, but I understand both views. At this time, for that Santa Fe Room, I say we don't raise it, but that's where I'm at personally.
I hear that. Are we, we're not really pushing it right now anyway, right? Is there a, is there a, a avenue for us to get an idea before the next meeting? Maybe a couple quotes or something as to what exactly it's going to take and how much it's going to take? And I, I, I hear that we can, we've got a motion in a second on the floor now. We can get an idea, we could move them up now and then we can always move them back, right? If it's not, if it ain't working and we just don't think it's worth it.
You can do whatever you want to do, as far as it. What I was going to say before the motion second was made is this was one of the projects that you said to increase revenue. It's one of the areas that we looked at and was a good project, but nothing has to be decided tonight. We presented the data, if the commission wants, and I'm perfectly fine with it, is let's wait another four months. That'll give us six months of data on the Douglas Center. We can get quotes on how much it's going to cost to refurbish the Santa Fe Room. And you guys could have more of what the cost is going to be so you understand where it is that we're going to have to go to break even on it. When you have an idea of what the Santa Fe Room's remodel is going to be and we have more data on the Douglas Center. I would, I'm not suggesting, I'm just saying, there's nothing that has to be passed tonight. We can look at this again in a few months when we have more data and quotes and everything.
Well, we're about to find out because we got a motion.
Yeah, motion second.
We'll see, but I would like, if we could, a, I don't know, do I need to make a motion for that later? To, to, I just want to get an idea of what, what we're looking at over here. Okay. All right, is it a roll call or, okay?
It hasn't been seconded.
It has been moved and seconded.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Moving right along to citizen requests and comments for issues not on the agenda. Please state your name for the record. Limit comments to five minutes. And I would ask my fellow commissioners to hold any responses till the end after we've heard everybody and then we will respond.
Steve Tapanis, I'm also the VP for the Chamber of Commerce. I wanted to bring to y'all's attention that we're not going to need the fire department out there for Pioneer Days. We've decided to go with the volunteer route. And that helps us in the sense of budgeting and, and the money that we have to allocate for Pioneer Days. And I'd also want to bring you, to your attention that anybody that needs any kind of spots, regardless of it's fire department, whoever it is, kind of like you all are trying to fill your budget and, and take care of things, we're also doing the same thing. So whoever needs a spot out there, if it's for training, whatever, they need to come see us and rent it just like everybody else does. Okay? Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Lanier Smith. I also am a board member for the Chamber of Commerce. And, you know, I, unfortunately, I missed a couple of meetings here that were in regards to discussions y'all were having that involved the Pioneer Day. Unfortunately, I had the flu. It was pretty bad. I agree also, I have been, I don't, don't take any offense to this, but I've been through a lot of city managers here and a lot of commissioners and a lot of mayors. And I always seem to work well with, with, with everyone. But first of all, I'm going to suggest that with these events that are costing, supposedly costing the city so much money that y'all don't want to spend any money on, I'm going to first agree, suggest that we have post-event meetings so that everybody can realize upfront what the cost is going to be for the following year. We were not in a position to get rules or swapping horses in the middle of the, of the race. And, you know, this, this search and for volunteer fire, fire people and EMS, you know, we've got mixed feelings on that as well. We can either have, we can either pay for that or we can have the dogs. The people don't want to come see EMS. They want to come see the dogs. That's basically what it, what it boils down to. It's a large event. It takes a lot of coordination. I work very heavily, hardly, hard with it every year. I'd like for everyone here to remember that High Springs has been here for a long time. The Pioneer Days has now been moved back down to where it originally was and historically. Just missing the train tracks is all. We want it to be about Pioneer Days. We want to, it's going to take just as much time to put it back the way it's supposed to be as, as it took to make it something different than what it is. You know, we want the, we want the attire, we want the, we want it to be about Pioneer Days. We want it to be downtown, want to encourage people to come here for a good time. Last but not least, Tom Weller Rotary Club, Lions Club, Chamber of Commerce. Want you to think for a minute about what those organizations do for the city in comparison to what the city does for those groups. I don't think we want to get for, to a scorekeeping or a tit for tat thing. But you know, I know that we do everything we can to make High Springs a pleasurable place to come to. And I think maybe need to find a way to keep the things that are going to happen annually, have happened since the beginning of time, in, in the city's budget somehow. I have a couple of suggestions. I don't know anything about what will work, but I hear that speed camera down there makes all kinds of money. Put two or three more up. Put a, put, put a penny a gallon tax on the stations in the city limits. What can you do? Come up with some ideas, guys. But the charitable organizations in this town cannot take the brunt of inflation. We all know, we're all experiencing it. We're all suffering right now. But we can't be the ones carrying the brunt of it all. And I don't mean all. I didn't mean it to sound that way at all. If y'all need help with something, you know I'm there, right? I mean, I saved a thousand dollars for the Christmas parade. Mayor's Youth Group, are we going to do that again? You know, we do soccer the same, same time Pioneer Day's going on. So we got our people spread out, but where's that money for the youth, the youth group go to? Isn't it pledged to first responders? Let's not do a tit for tat, okay? Thank you, guys. Just keep it in mind. We want to, we want to make High Springs, keep High Springs a enjoyable place to come without, without all the drama, okay? Appreciate your time.
Anyone else for citizen comment? Okay, we'll entertain commissioner response. I will say, I'll start with Mr. Smith. We did so when the last Mayor's Youth Council, when they did the, with the Lions Club, all that money went to the fire department because it was right after we had the mold thing. We did talk Monday about doing another one and also having a, we're getting with Parks and Recs and doing a pickleball tournament in order to raise money so that the Mayor's Youth Council could pay for the first responders at Pioneer Days as well. We got to, we got to figure out a way, maybe we can get out the agenda a little bit more for, for the youth council a little bit better. That way we can get some of the citizens, you guys got to come see these kids. These kids are freaking impressive. And they wanted to do something. They also were starting a scholarship group. So that money for the youth council is, they're looking for other ways. These kids are very interested in giving back to this community. And one way that we had talked about Monday was giving it to the chamber for that reason. And then I know Commissioner Howell also had an idea for some stuff, so we're, we're, we're not doing tit for tat. But what, what we, what I will tell you is that it's, it's important for us to be fiscally responsible. And I agree with you, having a debrief afterward would be fantastic. And it got, the ball got dropped somewhere. I don't care where it got dropped. But I'll tell you, if we're not going to be fiscally responsible, then we are not going to have the things that we do need to have. And you, you know that better than anybody, so we don't want it, we don't want a tit for tat either. We love y'all. We love working with y'all. We love having Pioneer Days. I've been to that every year since I was a baby, so, no, we're definitely with you. We've just got to, we've had to tighten the bootstraps like everybody else and that's what we're working for.
We're equally excited about that.
Oh yeah, we'll believe it.
So it doesn't matter what y'all decide to do. You know, we've got the equipment, we've got, we've got the people that are, are happy to do it, so let us know and we'll, we'll jump on it.
Yep, thank you for that. Commissioners, any other comments?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I've got, this is something that I had for the end of the meeting, so we're saving a little time. Talking about the, supporting the chamber and having the fire, the, the fire department there to help support them. Like, like Lanier said, the city and the chamber have, have worked in partnership for a long, long time. And I know that everybody is interested in continuing on with that. And I would like to, as we are, I'm sure Mrs. Wilson and Mr. Marshall are working on the budget for next year, just keeping the fore, you know, in the foreground there. How do we get back to that point to, to partner with them? Not necessarily paying for everything, but you know, do we have the, the ability? Because we hadn't budgeted for it this year and unfortunately it came in at the last minute with Mrs. Decker. But you know, Chief Peters says we need it and Chief is our fire chief, so that's what we got to do. You know, I'm, I'm not going to try to overstep his, his decision, but I certainly will, I recommend that, or I think that's a great idea for you guys to reach out to a volunteer fire department. That way you're still covered and it's, I'm certain, cheaper. But as we go forward in the budget process, I'd like to, to be able to plan for, you know, these events, the big events that bring thousands of people here. You know, the parade, the tree lighting and Pioneer Days, those are our big ones. And just, you know, thinking forward.
Any other commissioner comments? All right, thank you. Moving on to item H, new business. Discuss, consider and act on awarding bid for renovation and restoration of High Springs Sports Complex multipurpose fields.
That's what you have before us to be put. We, when we went through the ARPA, committing ARPA funds, Parks and Rec was approved. for, um, reseeding the fields to get them ready for tournaments and what, whatnot. So what you have before you, we got two bids and discussing with, um, Jen about which bid we like. And we reviewed, we're open for discussion on which bid you want to go with. Staff is recommending that we go with, let me get the name of the company first. Double B Southern. Double Bs, so if you look at the two bids, Double B Southern is actually the more expensive bid. But when you look at it and you look at the qualifications, Mincy's has never done this type of re-turfing before, this will be their first job. And we're, Double B has had the experience in this kind of reseeding. And we figure if we're going to spend that kind of money, we want to make sure it's done and done right. So staff is actually recommending Double B.
They sod. They're not reseeding.
Sod.
Yep. So taking it all the way back to grade, we have irrigation that we've already worked on that they'll do then, so we don't tear up brand-new heads. And then they'll bring in pallets of rolled sod. Um, in this, uh, particular, um, bid that we're recommending, um, if you'll see on there, they've, uh, worked with Newberry Sports Complex, so, um, they've done some local similar type of jobs.
Please.
Funding that was approved was thirty-five thousand dollars. As you can see, this is much higher than that. We've already been in touch with Gina Peoples at the county and reviewed it with her to make sure this would be a good Wild Spaces Public Places project. And she agreed that this would be appropriate use. It's, it's new construction really of the fields because we're starting really from, from scratch. We do have about four hundred thousand dollars in the Wild Spaces budget right now. Most of that's available, there's a little bit left for GAI for the, the trails. And of course Douglas Center is done. So the, the funding is available there, but that was how we wanted to proceed with it if it's the pleasure of the commission.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Please.
So have, Mr. Marshall, have you had conversations with both of these respondents? Or are we just looking at the data right now?
Jen is, Jen has talked to them.
Okay. I mean, because when I look at Mincy, they're a local known too. Highly regarded, so.
Yes, ma'am, they, they, there, there will be plenty of work to go around. Um, we hope to do, um, a full kind of thing out there. This is just like phase one. In other years, we'll have, uh, other projects. But unfortunately, the double Southern, um, they actually grow, uh, their own sod. So that's where, um, we're able to get a little bit there. Um, and we, we do, Mincy supports a lot of our sports programs, um, and we would love to go with them. We just don't think at this time that they're the right choice.
Mr. Mayor. Please. Ms. Jennifer, is this, are they relining the fields? Like re, um, making sure everything's straight as far as the baseline, it's home plate, all that kind of stuff as well?
So this is the multi-purpose fields, these are not the baseball fields. So we're talking about, there's, um, the field, several fields in back. Um, and we are adding filter to extend, uh, one of the fields, um, because we plan to hold tournaments out there, we're investing to potentially bring on additional revenue.
Is that field two you're going to extend?
Uh, if you have the aerial there, um, it's actually, um, I don't know how I labeled it, field one. So the one where, by the cow pasture, it'll be extended a little bit.
It's by my mama's house.
And then, and then, uh, I believe the other large field, or we call it field two on there, I can't remember how.
Two's the one in between the, um, the two, it's at center field of the, the place on the right. That's two.
Right.
One, two, three.
Okay, so field three actually, um, right now it's used for two different age levels for soccer, but we're having them re-sod that whole, so we'll have a full football field. Um, because those are actually bigger than soccer sizes. So it, they will be true multi-purpose now.
Wow. So field one will go basically to where the berm is now, is that what we're saying?
Correct. Yep, just in front of the berm because we do want drainage.
Are we still going to allow for the disc golf baskets to be out there?
It shouldn't disturb those at all.
Commissioner Howell started sweating. I've got to get my exerciser.
Did y'all have any other questions?
Yeah, you said Mincy's, they never did this type of project at all. They never did.
Um, the, not this type of sports turf, um, where we're looking for tournament-ready. They absolutely do tons of site prep and, and I'm sure, you know, they could, but, um, the other company has specialized equipment as well. Um, and like I said, they, they have the ability to grow their own sod, um, so it's coming directly from source.
They're both using the same kind of sod though, they're both recommending Zoysia, right?
Yes, because that's actually what we were hoping for. Um, that's drought tolerant, um, high wear resistant. Opposed to usually you'll have Bermuda is what most people use, uh, for sports turf. But this is just a little bit more wear and tear, so the Zoysia is what we, the target we were looking for.
Where does Double B grow their sod at?
Wherever they're actually located at, I don't know if it's out by Newberry, um, but they have a...
So it's still in the area.
Oh, they are very much local, yes, sir. They come highly recommended from Newberry Parks and Rec as well.
I guess my only thing, like you said, my Mincy's is local, local. And, um, I remember us making that, I won't say we made the mistake, but, um, with our roads, we had a local one that wanted to do the roads. And they would have put in the better work because they actually live here and they drive down them. And I understand Newberry is like right there, but like, it's something about when you have somebody that actually lives in the town, they take more pride in making sure the project is done right because they actually live in the area. That is my personal opinion.
What is the special equipment you refer to?
Um, there's a, a Holley Rick or I can't remember, it should be listed on there. Um, I've got, uh, several bids in my head right now. Um, but it's the grading process to get it, the fields level, um, because you definitely want level play. Um, it's that original process and then the way that, uh, they're going to treat the fields afterwards to make sure that we can have a quick turnaround, um, and that they're locked into place. But they should have that specialized equipment, uh, written in their bid. I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me. And you'll see that Mincy's bid, um, is more in line with a quote, um, than the other bid. Like I said, kind of followed the bid guidelines, um, included a cover letter and then gave some, you know, descriptions of, of some of the equipment they would be using.
Well, do we know whether Mincy's was going to have the same equipment just because they don't have it spelled out the way B, Double B does right now?
I am not quite sure. Mincy's was working in partnership, uh, with Dunright, um, who is going to be doing our irrigation. Um, and, you know, since not one is specialized, I think they were going to kind of work as a group, um, to, to work on this project. So I, I'm, I'm, I, unfortunately, I don't have an answer to your question. But I mean, if, if he submitted a bid, I would, I would hope they'd have the equipment to see it through.
Mr. Mayor, if I may please, on, what you said about Double B's estimate and the, certainly the scope of work that they've described here is much more descriptive. And they say here that there's a ninety-day replacement period for the turf. Do we know if Mincy also gives a ninety-day guarantee for the turf?
Unfortunately, that wasn't included in the bid, so I have no answer to that.
Okay. I'm, I'm just trying to reconcile going with a submittal that's twenty thousand dollars higher. That's a big difference. Yeah. Uh, it's, it's not that I, I don't, I, I do think that the preparation of their estimate is very professional. But I also know Mincy's, they have a really good reputation. Um, and it's just, you know, if you've been here a while, it's one of those, if you know, you know.
So for transparency, um, before we, we had to figure out how much this might potentially cost. Um, so we reached out to several, um, Mincy's, Dunright, um, as well as, uh, Double B, um, to find out kind of what, um, they all kind of came out and took measurements. So, uh, they, how do I put this? Never mind. I don't know how to put it correctly, but, um, I, I would highly encourage you, and again, I am a full supporter of Mincy's in any work that we can ever give them, I, I would love to. Um, they definitely, if we are working on our baseball fields, Mincy's is, is the guy that we're going to call. You know, uh, but I would strongly recommend you not choose the lowest bidder this time. It may be twenty thousand more, but, um, you're going to get professional quality, um, results because they have done this type of work before. And for those fields back there, I don't know if any of y'all have soccer players or, or anybody who has been back there. There has been work that was done, um, probably ten years ago that was done not well. And we are now on the back end of that. We've had to do some re-irrigation because they didn't put the proper filters in place. Um, and as well as, um, you know, the mesh that comes with the sod, um, the sod wasn't, uh, taken care of afterward, and then we had mesh coming up, we had players tripping over it. So again, I, I, I hear that twenty thousand less, but I strongly recommend that you go in with a company that has this type of work in their resume.
And, and they, I noticed they did a hundred and eighty-day replacement as well as a year warranted for the sod as far as Southern B or Double B.
Yes, and they've also offered consulting to make sure that we know how to fertilize it properly, how to maintain it, so that our initial investment, we can make sure that, uh, we take care of it so, so we, we keep it nice.
I like that. I like that they're both local. I do agree, Mincy's has got a great reputation, but I've also, I've been out there and played, and my kids have played on the Double B stuff out there, Newberry, right after it was done, and it was done very well. They were the nicest fields around. So. I take a lot of stock in what y'all say. So if y'all want Double B, if city's recommending Double B, that's where I'm leaning.
While we're recommending Double B, so, um, sometimes the lowest bidder isn't the best. You know, um, this one here has experience and whatnot. However, Mincy's would do a great job. We're, for a reason when we have to make a recommendation and talking to Jen, the experience and the ancillary things that she just mentioned is what put Double B as staff recommendation. Jen's up to you, we're happy to work with Mincy's, they've done great work, they just haven't done this. And that's why we're looking at Double B. But Mincy's, you know, they got to do a first one sooner or later. It's up to you.
I want to reiterate like everybody else, I, I want to keep our local guys in-house as much as possible. Uh, we've let that fail in our roads recently. And so we'll just have to go on y'all's recommendation in this aspect here.
Again, it's just a recommendation.
The local to the region, region, not necessarily High Springs, and this is their specialty, so.
Okay. Do we have any, uh, public comment? I'll entertain a motion at this time. Based on the recommendation, I make a motion that we accept the estimate from Double B Southern.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. This is not a roll call, okay? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Thank you. Moving on to new business item number two, discuss, consider and act on request for spending SRO vehicle procurement.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Looking good, chief.
Well, thank you, I've been in, uh, hobnobbing in Tallahassee, so I'm glad to be back and off of enemy territory of Florida State University, so. Before you, uh, today, we, uh, brought this before you a while back. And you approved expenditures for three school resource officer vehicles at a tune of a hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. That was through the opera funds. You also supplemented, uh, additional funds, uh, through Red Speed at thirty-nine thousand. So our purchase for the vehicles, uh, equated to a hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars. So a little bit under the one forty-six. And inflation is all there and everything. So the equipment for installation of these vehicles are at fifty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-nine thousand and eighty-nine cents. So, um, as you know, equipment, police vehicles are expensive. So that's, uh, a tune of a hundred and ninety-nine thousand. So we are short of those funds, uh, by sixteen thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. However, we have, uh, located, um, funds, which we had sitting there for allocations of vehicles anyways. So we have, uh, located that shortfall in our insurance recovery for when we, uh, had vehicles that were, um, destroyed during the storm. And so we had placed that money there, um, for, uh, equipping vehicles. I've consulted with finance, um, uh, there's money there. And, um, I think that we have about eighteen thousand, five hundred there, so we're asking to use about sixteen thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents to complete, uh, the installation of those vehicles and the purchase of them. So that's why I'm before you for authorization.
Commissioner comment?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, and chief, I'm not a law enforcement officer, so is there a reason why the equipment that is in the current vehicles can't be migrated over to the new ones? Is it that different?
No, sir, no, ma'am. We do, we do migrate, um, equipment from, um, our previous vehicles. We, uh, take radars and we take the, uh, the radio, radios, we take, uh, the cameras. Um, we don't take the lights because at that time, you know, some of, some of the equipment has become antiquated. But just a reminder, this is not, um, switching of vehicles. We're purchasing new vehicles and some of the equipment is being switched, I'm sorry. Some of the equipment is being switched for this. So you won't see, I think we provided you the, the list of, uh, itemized equipment. So you won't see a purchase of a radio. You won't see, and these cars here, actually, we're not putting radars in them. Um, and this car is, I hate it, but we're not putting cameras because we're coming into this new thing with, if we purchase cameras, we have to lease them and pay for the, uh, the software. So, uh, we're having to revisit that. So I just made the decision that we're not going to put, from an expense, uh, cameras, which I hate, not putting cameras in school resource cars. So yes, ma'am, some of the equipment is being cycled. Yes, ma'am.
It costs a lot, a lot to equip these vehicles.
A car, it costs about twenty thousand dollars when you, when you, when you equip the vehicle.
It's ridiculous.
Yeah.
Are you, are you guys using Dana that's coming into Gainesville? Or who are you guys using for equipment now?
East.
Okay.
East Coast, I think it's called, they're very, uh, we are getting another, uh, quote from Dana because they're just coming in Gainesville. But my biggest thing is about service. I'm huge on service because I've been, we've been screwed in the past, uh, with vendors and what they did in our cars and what we had to pay. So, um, yeah.
Yeah.
Chief, I see you're, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, sir.
I see you're going with Ford Explorers, are they more serviceable than a, an actual car or vehicle?
So law enforcement, you won't find cars anymore, sedans. You know, you, the Dodge Chargers have, um, uh, been, uh, done, yeah, they're done. So you can, you can only purchase almost just an SUV. They have the Dodge Durangos, but I'm a little scarce on Dodge products. And so, uh, a small agency like me, when we make a purchase, we have to live with it. Gotcha. And so I know that Ford Explorers and the track record and what they do and they, they're working, so, um, we just don't have the funds to play with them like the state and other agencies. Copy that.
Are these ones hybrids?
No, they are not.
I was about to say.
Okay.
We went to hybrids and we got nothing but issues with them in Gainesville.
Well, we went to Georgia, I looked at cars, they talked about hybrid, I was a little scarce on it, I wanted to talk to other folks, but yeah, this is your standardized vehicle, it's not souped up or anything like that.
It would be hard for us.
Yeah.
Hybrid sounds like a good thing until they don't have all the bugs worked out.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of...
Six months.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I just want to clarify, it looks like we've got the canine package here from Montana's.
That's correct.
Okay, good.
Yes.
Got to make sure we're taking care of the puppy.
Yes.
Well, I make a motion that we approve, uh, Resolution twenty-two-five-dash-B.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, do we have any citizen comments? It's, uh, it's not a roll... It's a, it's not a roll call right now. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
No, thank you, chief. City Attorney report an update.
Just real quickly, Mr. Mayor, Danielle wanted me to bring up that uh she believes that our office and your manager's office work very well together in helping out, helping out in uh selecting central bidding. I think that process is working very well. It's been utilized now and and it, and no cost to the city. But it meets all of the state federal rules for bidding projects out and innovative way of doing it. So it seems to be working well.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have.
Love it. Your time to shine, sir.
I got a little bit this time. So the state legislative session has started and um been pouring myself probably the last two or three weeks over legislation and what's being proposed. As I said during the previous meeting with CRA, there's a bill going through that we uh we oppose as far as CRA. There are more bills um that are not CRA. For example, we found today that there's a bill in there that wants to dissolve local planning councils um in which we rely on a lot. And that would be, that would be a hard hit to the city if we lost the regional planning council. So um, working with our lobbyist, our lobbyist has been phenomenal during this legislative session. He is right on top of everything, calls me, lets us know if something's gonna affect High Springs. So uh legislative session's in and I know a few of you are gonna go to legislative days, which I'm gonna go to. So there is a know before you go webinar for legislative action days. That's gonna be held Tuesday, March eighteenth from two to three. I'm in Lake City for my uh CPM class, but I will be stepping out to watch that. If you're going to legislative days and you can spare that hour, it would, it would be great. I wanted to give you an an update on the Priest Theater. So the bid advertisement for the general contractor is ready and it's ready to go. Um, we have the drawings and all the proposals from Paul Strassing's office. And it's been submitted to the state. The state has to approve it because of the historical um significance of the building. And once we have the okay from the state, which we're hoping is any day Ashley has been on top of this, um, we will be able to put the bid out. I think it's gotta go out for thirty days though. Is that right? Thirty days because of the amount um has, that's a statute. Also, um, we're working with a consultant that's gonna come. We have two projectors and I didn't realize how dangerous these projectors are. The bulb in them can actually like explode if it's not and cause a lot of damage. So we have a specialized consultant that's gonna come in, remove the bulb, remove the projector, get it wrapped up and we're gonna store it. Um, so it's preserved for whatever happens to that building. We've been in contact, the rails and trails, we kinda, we've hit a lot of roadblocks with that. However, we've been contacted like it was yesterday and that may very soon become a reality. We have sent a letter committing to the conversation and whether we gotta decide whether we're gonna maintain the the rail to trail in our, in our area or is the county going to maintain the whole thing. I didn't wanna commit um the city to anything without at least getting to the table and discussion and what is going to happen with that Rails the Trails and how that will go. For those who don't know Rails the Trails, it'll, it'll be the corridor to uh Newberry. So we are going to be sitting at the table and hashing this out with the county. It looks like the funding and the support is finally there for Rails the Trails. No promises, but they're at the gate. So let's, let's go. And lastly, um, flag football. We remember Joe Tillman came up about this flag football and I, I said, let, hold a camp and see how much interest. Cause I didn't know if there'd be that much interest. I thought maybe twenty, thirty kids. They had like, I think over two hundred, oh, Jen left.
Two fifty.
Over two hundred kids. And I drove by, stopped and watched it for a minute. What a phenomenal camp. It was well-run, well-organized, well-attended. Kids had a blast. It was a huge success. So hats off to Jen Appleby and Joe Tillman working together to make that happen. And with that, I didn't think there was that much interest. I was wrong. So we are gonna look at what we gotta do to make flag football here in High Springs. There, there's a definite interest in it and I think we need to pursue that. And Jen's working with Joe to see what kind of programming. It takes a lot to start a league like that. And um they worked hard and what a great, what a great event. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner comments and concerns? Commissioner, how?
Nothing for me. I got a couple of things. Uh, as we've seen the bid for the fields, where are we at on the pavilion at the park? One where we, with the hole in the roof, we had discussed that a couple of times and some, a couple of meetings. So where are we at on moving forward estimates or what have you with that?
So Jen left and she's the one with that answer. So what I'll do is this, I I ask Angela is I'll ask Jen and on Monday, we will do a email to all the commissioners with an update on where that is. And I will put it in my manager's report for the next one. I don't wanna give you false information. So you'll have that information come Monday in your emails. And since it was brought in public for transparency, I will give an update in my manager's report the next.
Well, if we're gonna spend this kind of money on fields, I definitely hope we're considering getting that roof.
There's community, actually, there's community partners that are here in the audience right now have reached out and um said that they will help with it. And it's just been a great outpouring for that. Let me find out from Jen where we're at with that. I just don't have the answer. I don't wanna give you false information.
And then my next one that concerns, I, it may be shooting off from the hip here, but is there any way we could find out if it would be too expensive for us to have our own garbage department here in High Springs?
So, so I've, that's funny. You brought that up. Me and Diane.
There is a possibility that one company may not be around. So we're gonna be kinda locked in on one particular contract. Now, I know some cities have their own garbage disposal.
We, so I have actually thought about that and talked it over, but I'm sorry, I'm messing around papers. Um, we've actually had discussions on what it would take. And we're, it takes a lot for, of data to get together, but we, me and Diane have discussed what it would look like to have a city ran uh garbage collection by a truck. You gotta hire a couple, few people, probably cross-trained with public works so everybody knows how to work the truck and hire a couple of people dedicated to it. Um, you're right, one, one of the people, one of the companies that bid for that contract is being bought out by the other company that was successful in the contract. And that makes me nervous. That makes me nervous. And um, so we're gonna look and see if that's something that we really wanna get into. I've called a couple. Actually, I've called several city managers and every one of them says we don't wanna be in the garbage business. But we gotta look 'cause if there's a monopoly out there, we, we have to look at other options. So me and Diane have talked about it. We haven't given it great discussion because there's just so much going on. But now that I know that you have an interest in it, we'll take a look at it a little bit.
Well, I know there's gonna be a lot to deal with it because you got manpower, insurance, vacations, equipment. Not only you're just gonna have a local picking up garbage cans, you also got dumpster truck. You're gonna, I don't know if they can merge that, but I don't see how that would work. You'd have to possibly have two trucks, maybe a third in case one goes down.
So now that I know there's an interest on the commission, I will put that a little bit higher on our list of priorities and we will start analyzing to see what it will take to get a garbage department.
Good deal.
Personally, I don't wanna run a garbage department, but it may be a necessity.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Mr. Marshall, in follow-up to what Commissioner Blesworth said, one thing that we would need to look at with that is all of the solid waste from Alachua County currently goes to the La Vida Brown Transfer Station way the heck on the east side of Gainesville and then gets trucked up to Union County, the New River Solid Waste Facility. New River Solid Waste Facility is not that far from High Springs. So in terms of, you know, a carbon footprint, if we were going straight to the landfill, it, it depends on what kind of tipping fees you could get from the landfill, but I think it's worth exploring.
Something that we will definitely look into.
Okay. Well, everybody's taken my end of, end of, end of meeting comments. I had something here about Jennifer for flag football, so thanks. She did a great job. She did a great job.
My comments come first.
Yeah, I know, I know. And you took it. Commissioner and Vice Mayor Miller talked about the the grand opening for the uh new place. Yeah, but that was a CRA meeting, so I can still say that. It's a different meeting. Um, there is a grand opening for a new venue here in town. Um, they took over for the Mary Me Minimonies and they're just a lovely couple. And they're having their grand opening on Saturday at nine-thirty and I highly recommend stopping by and introducing yourselves if you can. They're super sweet. They've got some really cool ideas. Um, so the flag football thing, when, when Tillman told me about it one time, he would, man, he was like a dog with a bone. He was not gonna let go. And I'm like, dude, this is a, this is a Jennifer Jeremy. This is not a, you know, talk to the commission, but this is not us. But when, when he talked to me about it that first time, he was, he said, spoke so highly of how great Jennifer had been. So, you know, it was a Sunday and it was, the weather wasn't great, but it was incredible turnout. So that's awesome. Um, I already talked about the the chamber and the fire department 'cause, you know, great. So the only other thing I've got here to talk about was, Mr. Marshall, with your approval, following up on the comments that were made at the last meeting regarding your meeting with two representatives from Bridlewood. A lot of people had questions about that. A lot of people are asking, is Bridlewood happening? And I think it's really important that people realize Bridlewood is still happening. The CDD and any of that other stuff has nothing to do with the fact that they have a legal right to proceed. And so we cannot, we couldn't, we couldn't keep Bridlewood from happening. It, they have their entitlements and they have their right to develop. Um, but the meeting that Mr. Marshall had the day before the last meeting, the developers, representatives, the engineer and the realtor had what's called a Mylar that they brought into Mr. Marshall to have him sign. Um, a Mylar is submitted as a legal document to replat the land. And it requires three signatures. It requires the mayor's signature, the city attorney's signature and the city manager's signature. And when they brought it into Mr. Marshall, it already had the mayor and the city attorney's signatures on it. And Mr. Mayor, publicly, I wanna thank you, sir, when they brought it directly to you. You had the the forethought to reach out to Mr. Marshall first and I really appreciate you doing that 'cause this is unusual. You know, I mean, being a mayor, they don't tell you how to do it. And when they throw a Mylar at you, you don't see those kinds of things very often. So, so I really appreciate the fact that you reached out to Mr. Marshall 'cause all of that stuff should come from him. Um, and they wanted Mr. Marshall to sign that Mylar. And in that meeting, Mr. Marshall declined to sign the Mylar because the city of High Springs does not have the required documents that were agreed to in the developer's agreement to sub, to be submitted to the city of High Springs for the city of High Springs protection. So Mr. Marshall said, no, I will not sign it until we have all of that documentation. And I would be remiss not to say that Christie Atkins, our planning tech, is a rock star. She has been keeping all of these things straight and she is an amazing. Our staff here at High Springs, they will go out of the way to help anybody. And she's cheerful and she does, you know, she does whatever she can to help anybody. Our city clerk, our assistant city clerk, people need something, they help them with a smile all the time. So I wanna publicly thank Christie for her doggedness in terms of keeping up with this. So to try to make this story a little shorter, the, the developer was giving Mr. Marshall the hardcore, full court press. We need you to sign this document 'cause it's not a legal document until all three signatures were there and he would not do it. Mr. Marshall stood firm for the city of High Springs. Mr. Marshall got understandably frustrated with the fact that they wouldn't take no for an answer and he abruptly ended the meeting. I'm okay with that. I'm sorry if it didn't work out so well for them, but all they need to do is get us the retired, required documentation. And then they can submit their Mylar and they can get it replatted and they can, they can rock and roll. So I thought that it warranted some follow-up, Mr. Marshall, because that dangling participle that was left out there, I didn't think was really appropriate. And as former Commissioner Jones pointed out, that was not the appropriate form. However, since it was left out there, I think we needed to kinda close that loop. Um, so as I understand it, we still don't have the required documentation from, from the developer?
So we don't. And because of the abruptness of the end of my, of the meeting, um, they got their attorneys involved and had the attorney on speakerphone and was asking these questions. And I told them, if you have your attorney on speakerphone, I'm not gonna speak to you without our attorney. And um, so now that attorneys are involved, no offense, Mr. Walker, but we know once attorneys get involved, the speed of government really slows down. But I wanna, I'm glad everybody gets that. Um, so this is where we're at with that is I am not comfortable, I will not sign my, I'm very big about what I sign my name to. Cause once it's on there, it's on there. And when I was looking at it in conjunction with Christie, a lot of the protections for the city, surety bonds and whatnot were not met and the developer's agreement was not met. And I'm not gonna sign it and put the city in a vulnerable position because I just wanna sign a Mylar and get it off my desk. So yes, I stood my ground on it, but I don't, Bridlewood's gonna happen. And the faster it gets built, the faster we'll see the revenues and the profit tax. So I'm not wanting to hold this up. I had this conversation with Mr. Walker today. Help me get this across the finish line, is what I told Mr. Walker today. So he's working with their attorney to get all the questions that Christie and I have so I can sign this Mylar. So what Mr. Walker is doing is he's getting a meeting, it'll be Monday at three o'clock. And it'll be myself and Christie and the fire chief, the county fire. Um, Jason's not gonna be there, right? Well, we got our whole team and they're gonna meet on a Zoom meeting with the engineer, their attorney. And it's basically gonna sit down and, 'cause my questions don't get answered. They got, my questions kept getting ran over. I got talked over and they kept dancing around my questions and not giving me the answers that I'm gonna need before I put my signature on that. So now the attorneys are involved, Mr. Walker is gonna have their attorney on there. Here's our concerns. Let's hash it out and let's get it done. So I'm hoping by the end of day Monday, I'm not gonna sign, there's two ways I'm gonna sign it. One, they give me the documentation that we need. Two, Mr. Walker says we are in a comfortable spot and we're happy with the liability. And once we're both happy with the liability and what we're going, I'll sign it. I'm hoping by the end of day Monday, I can sign that and that project gets moving forward. But I will not sign it unless I do, I'm comfortable that the city's not in a vulnerable position and that we're protected against this project.
In, in follow-up to that, I understand that we also, there was a lot of pre-construction documentation that we didn't receive either. Would we receive all of that as well? And in particular, the gopher tortoise relocation report. I asked for information on that and Christie sent me everything she had. But I don't know that we've actually gotten the official report that the gopher tortoises were properly relocated 'cause that became an issue. They started moving dirt before they took care of the gopher tortoises and they got shut down by Fish and Wildlife because they knew, they, they shouldn't have been doing it. So I wanna make sure that that's been taken care of. I know that there are a couple of folks in Tillman Acres that have new neighbors digging in their backyard and they're happy to have them. Not a problem. You know, maybe some of the early construction activity drove some of the gopher tortoises just a little bit to the south and they've got new, new friends in the backyard. No problem. That's no longer Bridlewood's problem now 'cause they relocated themselves. Um, but there should be a report in, in, in some regard where we, we have been assured that that was taken care of.
Can I tag on the back of what you're just saying? Cause I just pulled the email up. And apparently we have seven steps that they need, there are seven things they need to be doing for you to be able to sign. You're, you're gonna make sure that all seven of these are completed before moving forward.
So I'm not gonna sign it until everything is completed or our attorney and their attorney work something out where the liability of the city is lessened. There's a couple of things, like they sent a check for.
Inspection fees.
And the check was for the wrong amount. They, they acknowledged, we might have underpaid you. Let us know. And we'll say, I don't care about that check. We'll move forward. I'm not holding it up from that. What I'm holding up for is things like a surety bond. The surety bond is a hundred and ten percent of the construction cost. So if this project goes belly up, the city has the bond to go finish the project. And so it's not just sitting there. And that's what protects the city to make sure that we don't have a blight out there. So the two ways I will sign it is they give me all the documentation that's required in the developer's agreement that they sign. Or our attorney says, work something out and everybody's happy and our attorney says, we're comfortable. Those are the two times I'll sign it. And I'm not holding it up. I don't wanna hold it up. I want it off. And I'm not holding it up. I don't want to hold it up. I want it off my desk. It's, I just told Mr. Walker maybe an hour ago, that when this gets done, seventy-five percent of my stress will go away. Dave, your question, Commissioner?
Uh, yes, yes, sir.
I'll look in the gopher report.
Well, I mean, it, it's, there's, there's a pretty, pretty specific protocol that's to be followed. It's not an easy process, but it's one that is important.
I'll ask Christine, we'll get on it.
Yeah, I don't think she had it. It just may be that they didn't send it. It's entirely possible that there's other stuff that they have that just hasn't been sent. And, Mr. Walker, I know that Mr. Marshall let you know that I was, um, not super happy. Um, and I'd, I'd like to understand why it is that you signed the Mylar when Mr. Marshall hadn't. If you didn't know that we didn't have all of these documents, that concerns me. That makes me feel like the City of High Springs is not being protected by our attorney. So, I'm not sure how that came to you.
Mr. Mayor, um, first of all, the final plat was approved in January of twenty twenty-four. So, usually this process is pretty pro forma and not controversial. It, it proceeds on without all of the, the stress that our city manager is going through. So, it's a pretty straightforward process as far as the signatures on the, the document is different than the recording of the document. So, three point nineteen, I think of our development agreement provides that all of these protections that we're talking about, the inspections, the, um, surety bond for performance has to be met. And once all those inspections, that all of the engineering, the documents, the, the specs has, have been approved by our engineer and inspected by our engineer, then the, the Mylar can be recorded. So, there's a bit of a difference between signing the Mylar and, and recording it. Once it's recorded, then they can sell lots and move forward and do all the things they need to do. So, my investigation has been that your manager and your planner have done exactly what they're supposed to do and which is to say, okay, has Midtower and Associates done the inspection? And have they passed inspection in accordance with the regs? And the answer came back, no. So, it's been a bit of an odd scenario, but I think the management here has done exactly appropriate and has said, we're not going to sign off on it or allow this Mylar to be recorded until we get the final sign-off by the engineer. And part of the discussion between the attorney's offices is, well, we don't really need to have a, a payment and performance bond because we've already completed a lot of the work that is supposed to happen. And that would be all well and good if our engineer had signed off on the work, inspected it and said the compaction amounts are in keeping with engineering standards and our LDRs and, and the paving has been completed and all that sort of thing. And those things have not occurred. Now, we're usually not in the loop on any of that sort of thing. It's just has a, a plat is a very pro forma procedure. But the other things that go into it and the recording of the plat have not been adhered to. And I, my investigation is that your manager has done exactly what he said, which is, he's wanting to push this forward. I can tell you, in the, this is the first time in my forty years of doing this kind of work, that this has gotten so far out of kilter. And I think the allegation is that the city is holding them up. We didn't approve their CDD and now we're doing everything possible to, you know, create problems for this project. Well, the fact of the matter is that if the roadways are not to standard and there's ways to reverse engineer something, if, if it hasn't been completed and, and constructed and keeping with our specs, then we can still inspect that and engineer and certify that it is either complete or not complete. So, so the inspection is a, a huge component and that needs to be done. And it needs to be paid for by the developers. So, there's one point five percent fee that is paid and that's what Jeremy Marshall was talking about when he said the check's short of the number that they're supposed to have sent in. So, that's another thing that has been a little odd in this process. But that's what pays for Midtower to do the work. My hope is that, that we meet on Monday and delineate a process of how quickly are they going to have the, all of the specs to our engineer? How quickly can our engineer go out and inspect water, wastewater, roadway, any other public improvements that need to be done? And are they completed at this stage in keeping with the, both the development agreement and our LDRs? If they are, then I tend to agree, a payment and performance bond is not necessary. We move to the maintenance bond, which is a twenty percent number of, of, a bond that is there to make sure that if, in a year's timeframe, that we don't have problems with this particular infrastructure that has been, that has been, um, completed at this point. And so, that's the process that we're undertaking. And usually this process, in my experience, is pretty straightforward and there's really no controversy. So, I'm, I'm a little surprised and, and I think there's some reliance on my office typically on the engineer, because the engineer is certifying, when he signs it, that all of these things have been completed. And I'm talking about the developer's engineer, that all of these things are in keeping and completed when he signs off on the, on that Mylar. And Christie has set forth in letters, well, wait a minute, we haven't had the inspections. We haven't had the payment and performance bond. We haven't had the things that are normally conducted in, in this sort of thing. So, you know, I've sent, uh, and talked with the attorney for the, the developer and said, we're not holding you up. And it's a bit of controversy as to whether or not the inspection is for all of the public infrastructure or just simply the infrastructure that's being turned over to the city. And if you look at the development agreement, it says, the inspection is to all public infrastructure. And, and so, we're not just inspecting this sliver of it, which is water and wastewater. We're, we're inspecting everything. Our people, our public are gonna be driving on those roads. So, the inspection goes to everything to make sure that the citizenry that move into that particular development are in fact protected. So, that's the process that we've said needs to be done and that's part of our discussion come Monday on this.
So, so if I could just follow up with that, I, I appreciate the explanation. So, so is, is it my understanding then that Mr. Potts just brought the Mylar directly to you to sign?
That's where I, I, that's what I believed happened. Brought it to my office in Gainesville.
Okay.
Had his, that's what I do. I check to see if the engineer's signature on it. Uh, you know, the other professionals, the, the surveyor, you know, we're certifying off on all of that. Then goes to the city manager to sign. And then normally, all the things that I outlined have already been conducted. My office is pretty much out of that. And your manager said, oh, wait a minute, I haven't seen the, the payment and performance bond. And is that something that is required, both in terms of the, the development agreement and the LDRs? And my response was yes. And these, um, I think Christie and I had a meeting with Jeremy Marshall and we went through the development agreement. We outlined, these are all the things that appear to not have been taken care of. And, uh, and that was communicated to the developer.
Okay. I, I just think that the appropriate order of operations is, I think Mr. Marshall did make sure that the developer knew was that everything comes through his office. That way, that alleviates any stress for Mr. Mayor, cause when he signs checks, you know, Mr. Marshall has already signed them. He's assured that Mr. Marshall has already looked at them. So, I, I would, I'd like to hold firm with that, that anything comes through your office and then, then you can advise the attorney that, yes, we all have, we have all the documents we need. But at every, at every phase of this particular development, there's been controversy. And, you know, whether they got their CDD or not is immaterial to the fact that they need to provide the city with the documentation we require to protect the city. Has nothing to do with the CDD. So, um, I just, I was concerned. I'm not an attorney. None of us are attorneys and we are depending on you to get our back legally. And I, I certainly don't call into question your legal prowess by any means and your knowledge of the law. You're incredibly knowledgeable. But I'm just disappointed. I feel like the City of High Springs was let down and that you don't have our back. I know you mean to and I know you do and I know you're very busy. And, you know, I would, I would like to explore if possible, and I don't know what the, what the official mechanism would be. But is it possible, I know you are our charter officer, not your firm. What would be the mechanism by which, if the commission were agreeable and we could discuss later at another date, putting a different attorney from your office as our charter officer? Would we be able to have Clay Martin be our charter officer? What would be the mechanism by which to do that? Would we have to do an RFP or an RFQ or any kind of change, since our contract is with your office? I'm just concerned that, I know you're splintered a lot with the GRU Authority Board and, and Clay has been here before. Danielle is fantastic. She's fantastic, but she's only a part-time Florida resident, so I don't think that would be. But I would like to ask the commission if they were willing to discuss maybe at the first meeting in April, what the mechanism might be, if the commission is agreeable, obviously, if it's only me, it's not gonna matter. To perhaps having somebody different. I just, I feel like you let the city down on this one and we could have been exposed if Mr. Marshall had not been checking so closely. So, I appreciate the fact that you're, that you're stepping in right now and, and helping us out with that because they are, you know, developers are used to getting in their way. And, you know, we can't stop Bridlewood. We don't mean to stop Bridlewood, but we need to make sure we're protecting the city too. So, we, we, we depend heavily on you to help us do that. So.
I do have a question, Commissioner Wright. So, what did you say that they didn't pay the correct amount? What was it?
So, they were supposed to send a check for inspection fees and.
Point five percent.
Yeah, one point five percent. And they sent, I don't remember the amount, thirty-one thousand, but the amount is low. But they, they caught it. In fact, they, they emailed us today and asked us to send the check back, not to cash it, and they're gonna get the right amount. I'm not holding up for that. I'm comfortable with that check amount. The surety bond, the maintenance bond and the protections for the city, the attorneys need to hash out on Monday before I sign anything.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand you're not concerned about it. Um, I just wanted to make sure, cause sometimes when we not concerned about stuff, little things fall into the cracks and I just don't want to ma, want to make sure that, that gets done.
On this, I will tell you, so you're hearing that I'm not doing this and I'm fighting this and whatnot. The true unsung hero in this is Christie Atkins. Christie Atkins is on top of this. She knows that developer's agreement. She knows everything. And she's the one that's questioning. She is, one, she's too sweet of a girl and she doesn't have the teeth that I have. So, that's why I'm standing up. But Christie Atkins is the one that's really driving this boat on this. She's been phenomenal.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Please.
I've got this information from Christie. And, Mr. Walker, you were talking about some of the steps here and that's not typically in an agreement like this. Of course, some of us weren't here when the Bridlewood project was starting.
Like any of us, oh.
But Christie was saying, none of these seven have been met at all, at the time that I talked to her, if any of them's been met. So, is it something that y'all are gonna discuss to kind of do away with some of these? The seal seven agreement in three point fourteen is conditions prior to authorization of the project.
No, all of the steps have to be followed. So, we're not going to change steps that need to be followed. If the developer, um, pays the proper amount of the inspection fee to our engineer, Midtower, and Midtower says that the roadways are constructed to our standards and he certifies that this is adequate and in keeping with the specs and the agreement. And, and that is done and has been completed, then the, it doesn't make sense to have a performance bond to have, be in place, that they're going to complete that particular paving. So, if that is done in accordance with the inspection, we may be able to move to the next step, which will be the maintenance bond. And all of the other infrastructure also has to be inspected by our engineer. The water, wastewater, sidewalks, any of that sort of public infrastructure that would be done under the plan and specs, you know, have to be certified as complete.
Yeah, I'm like some of the other commissioners here. We getting some bad rap thinking we're holding this project up, when in fact, the steps aren't being, taken care of. And I'm thinking to myself as a consumer, if I was going to buy a house or having a contract, if I don't meet them requirements on that contract, I don't get the house or a vehicle or whatever. It's the same, seems to me, it's the same aspect as them developing this project with us as a city. It has to be met or we're just, we don't have anything protecting us for future. Am I reading that right?
There are developments that have occurred in some of our neighboring cities even, that there was no performance bond that was provided. So, the performance bond is in a hundred and ten percent of the projected cost of the public infrastructure. And if the developer goes bankrupt, then the city's not going to go out and pave these roads or put in the public infrastructure. And if those homes are already up and that infrastructure's not there, then you have a really, really bad situation. So, that's why we require a payment and performance bond as a part of the process of, of undertaking to build these, these improvements. Now, if those, if that infrastructure's already been completed, that's, that's where we're at. We're kind of in a chicken and an egg standpoint right now. And we're being told they're completed, but, you know, we can't just go off that. We have an inspection process. So, I agree with Jeremy Marshall that we're, you know, we're saying, we need the inspection. We've got to have that and it's gotta be completed before we move to the next step. So, my process is to say, okay, that's what is needed. Tell us when you're gonna get Midtower and Associates there. We'll make sure, we want to have Midtower on this call on Monday and say, okay, let's get it done, so we can move on to the next step. Normally, these processes are just very straightforward and it's not subject to a great amount of controversy. This one seems to have a lot of controversy associated with it and it's out of ordinary, in my experience of doing this for forty years.
I was just wondering if it was out of the ordinary. Why wouldn't the Bridlewood developers say, wait a minute, that's going a little overboard? But yet, they assign the agreement in the beginning to accept these terms. Am I right in, in saying that?
That is, that is the agreement is, and, and as you've said, it's laid out in three point fourteen. Step one, step two, step three, I think there's seven steps.
Seven steps, yes, sir.
That are laid out very specifically.
So, that's why I'm trying to figure out, if it wasn't acceptable at the time, why wasn't that brought up then? And all this would have been done and over with. So, here we are now at that and none of them been met. That's where we at. That's the game we're playing.
I would not say at this point that none of the steps have been met at this stage. I think some of the, for example, I think number two is the construction plan and drawings have been submitted. The engineering, engineered plans have been submitted. And I think that has been completed. So, you know, probably the majority of the steps have been completed. But as Jeremy says, one of the most important things is, hey, you know, the actual inspection. And that has not been completed at this point.
Okay, good. Thank you.
By our engineer.
And can I ask just one more thing, if I could please, Mr. Marshall? I know you and Ms. Wilson are probably working on budget right now. And I remember the first time I looked at a budget and it, it took the wind right out of my lungs. Would it be possible, while you are working on the budget, not in a, not in an official, we're presenting, but could we take a department at a time for meetings between now and when you're actually presenting the budget to kind of hash through the process by department? Cause we've got, we're a very relatively new commission. And I think if we had access to or eyes into the process, it might help us under- it might help us understand the roll-up. Would that be prohibitive in terms of an effort standpoint? You know, I don't know how you guys keep the numbers, how you roll them up.
So we're coming into budget. Right now, Diane's been working on audit because we're behind on audit. So I've been letting her focus on that. But we just reached out to the department heads and we came up with a budget timeline and a memo that's going to dictate the timeline. I'd have to go back and look at that to see how many meetings we have. And how we can do that, I, I, I'm all for it. I'm absolutely willing to do that. I just got to look at that timeline. But we, the departments haven't really dug into their budget yet. We're, we're still a little ahead of the game for that.
Okay.
But we, yeah, for transparency, we'll be willing to do that. Maybe just take a couple workshops.
Okay. Thank you.
So I just had a question because you brought it up. Are we going to get fined for being behind on the audit? Because I know that's what the auditor said last year.
No, so the, the agency that overlooks the, the audit is called J-LAC. I don't know what the acronym stands for. But meeting with the auditors and whatnot, we're behind. So we have until April 30th to get this audit done or they are going to start taking official action. We're one of the few communities that have reached out to J-LAC and said, listen, this is where we're at with the audit. I just gave Diane $15,000 for a consultant to help clean this and help get it going so we can get on track. Being behind on audit after this year will be unacceptable. So we will do what we got to do to get us back on track for audit. To answer your question, we won't get fined, but there will be legal action. But when we talked to J-LAC, they said April 30th is when we will start sending the notices and the legal. And we basically told them, we'll be done by April 30th. If not, it'll be within a week or two after. And it's going to be so long for them to actually start the administrative action that we'll be done. I'm not, I'm not overly concerned about this audit.
How many years have we been behind on the audit?
Well, we're two years behind right now, right?
We're something with 2023 and the 2024 is due by the end of June of this year. And so we're doing them parallel.
Okay, now, so that's the current one, right? But so it's only been two years we've been behind? We wasn't behind before that?
No, we've been...
When I arrived, I'm sorry. When I arrived at the city, we were already behind. And so I did 21 and 22 when I first got here. And we found several things we needed to clean up that have been in the system. And we're really, that's what we've been working through to get cleaned up. And...
And as I was saying, that's a total, how many years we've been behind? Five?
No. Well, 21 and 22 when I got here. And then 23 is what we're doing right now. And 24 is not late.
Okay, too. Employee of the week this week is Wayne Emerson. He is a cross trainer. He does public works and CRA. He does such a great job and the town raves about him. So he is our employee of the week this week. And that is all from me. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Did we get any updates on the sign shop? I know it was brought up in one meeting. Did we get anybody trained to operate the sign shop?
We haven't started yet. I was lucky enough today to spend three hours at Career Day at Santa Fe High School with some of our great staff and as well as our mayor's youth council. And I will brag on them. I got up and thought I was going to have to do a lot of talking and found myself just sitting there watching. I was, yep. I'm all about good looks, you know, when you look like this. What are you going to do? But no, these kids are pretty impressive and they did awesome. And they were just, it was very impressive to watch. And I was very proud of our, of our youth council, as I always am whenever I sit in there. And they had a meeting Monday and I, I really encouraged, they would love to have some of the community come out at the next one. And we'll make sure we even post it maybe a little earlier than we even do some of the other ones just to kind of get it because, I mean, these kids are pretty impressive. So it'd be, I think you guys would have a lot of fun coming out and watching them a little bit and seeing how well they do things. They probably run it a little better than we do. But I'm not going to tell them that because it'll go straight to their heads.